Work progressively through the proposed amendments, page by page. We will vote on as much as we can during today's two hours morning session. Public testimony will not be allowed during the voting session. City agencies may be questioned about particular amendments being discussed by the committee. We are here, to my far left is Councilman Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To his right is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton. Across from Councilwoman Middleton is Councilwoman Ricky Spector. We're also joined by Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. We're also joined by Angela Gibson, who's here representing Mayor Stephanie Lawrence Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my far right is Mr. Paul Plymouth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And to his left is Kara Coontz, both who are representing President Bernard Jack Young.
Yeah.
If you would like to contact the committee, please mail correspondence to the Office of Council Services. Attention to Jennifer Coats, to my right at 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore Mall in 21202, or email at jennifer.coats@baltimorecity.gov. I just want also to recognize and acknowledge to my immediate right is a staff person to the committee. My one and only grand rule is please turn off your cell phones, give courtesy and respect to the committee members when they vote. We also have, I'd like to, we have some committee handouts, so I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the communications from different individuals. I'll start with, by the council members, committee handouts from Councilman Eric Costello, Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark, Chairman, I, Councilman Ed Rysinger. We also had handouts submitted by the agencies, the Department of Planning, submitted by constituents, we had Mr. Chris Armstrong, Ms. Liz Bemmett, Mr. Edward Mocinko Sr., Mr. Mark Adams, Mr. Yon Palmore, Mr. Kent Mullin, Ms. Carolyn Hecker, representing the Baltimore Scrap Corporation. And also we have Mr. Josh Greenfeld, the Maryland Building Industry Association, and Ms. Joanne Massipust, she's from the Falls Point Community Association Organization. And these handouts are on all the committee members' desks. Just so everyone understands this, in the committee and also with the audience, the Land Use Transportation Committee has seven members. We have four members present, so when it comes to the vote, we just need a majority, which means we, out of the four, we need three out of the four for a motion to pass. We will, Councilwoman Clark, you have some, before we go into your amendments, because planning's first, but does everyone have Councilwoman Clark's current amendments that she passed out? Councilman Mosby, you have her amendments? Okay. Yeah, you had your withdrawals. What do you withdraw?
Um, Title 762? Do I have my withdrawals? Did I?
Before we start...
Not with me. Got it. What? Oh, you have them with you?
I have them with me.
Oh, thank goodness I don't.
Well, okay. So, on Title 12, we have withdrawals from Councilwoman Clark. We have T. 615, T. 388, T. 387, T. 397, T. 398, T. 415, T. 416, T. 418, T. 429, and T. 428. Do I have a motion to move the withdrawals?
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor say aye for the withdrawals. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The withdrawal, the motion passed.
Okay.
So, we'll just do, we'll just do 12.
Yeah, that's all. We'll just do 12.
And then when we get to 13, then we'll do 13.
Yeah, and then after that, we'll do 14.
Yeah, and we'll finish, we'll finish up today.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm done through 15, so I'm ready to go on to the other.
Okay. Okay, we're starting on Title 12, just start with the ID number, T. 762. This is on page 175, Title 12. This is amendment of the Department of Defense Department.
Mr. Chairman, this should be moved to the tables.
Oh, defer to table, move to defer to table.
Defer to tables. This is the development density.
Okay. Okay, do I have a...
I did. I moved to defer to table.
Councilwoman Clark, move to tables, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The amendment's moved to 762, move to tables.
Uh, can...
Councilwoman Clark, yeah.
Yeah, nothing.
Okay, now we're... When T., okay, T. 385, that's Rowan Park, 73.
The same as...
I think that's the same as what's...
Eighty-six.
T. 386.
Yes.
Yes.
So, what we'll do is, we'll not hit T. 385. We are now on T. 386. This is Councilwoman Clark's amendment.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for a moment, there was an amendment that I had that precedes this. It didn't get picked up with a number, but if I may, I'm calling it T.-A-A-A. I'm sorry. And what it is, is it is on page 175, lines 11, line 11. And it is to delete in its entirety the number six Inclusionary Housing Overlay Zoning District. So, I think we have a consensus that, that the idea of a district is not, doesn't jive, doesn't fit.
Make a move?
It's a motion. I'd like to move that amendment to delete from the list the Inclusionary Housing Overlay Zoning District category.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Councilwoman Rysinger votes yes. Councilwoman Craft is absent. He called in. This, Councilwoman Craft is ill. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilwoman Henry is absent. She'll be in late. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. So, we have four yes with...
Thank you.
Three absent. T. 88A, right?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Okay, now, we are on T. 386.
Correct.
Councilwoman Clark?
Mr. Chairman, members, this adds the word council to page 176 in the statement on line seven to 11. In other words, this says that the EC zoning district provides a set of base district regulations that offers a certain intensity of development by right. It also provides an allowance for a campus master plan which must be approved by the city council, added, that allows for flexibility in the development and expansion of the campus above the base district regulations. Move approval.
Okay. It is moved by, so we're only adding council. So, it is moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Councilwoman Rysinger votes yes. Councilwoman Craft is absent. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilwoman Henry is absent. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have four yes with three absent. Motion passes. Now, we are on, Councilwoman Clark, T. 384?
Correct. Basically, this does the same thing for hospital campuses, and it adds the word council to make it a city council action, like a putt. Move approval.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Councilwoman Rysinger votes yes. Councilwoman Craft is absent. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilwoman Henry is absent. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have four yes with three absent. T. 384, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I suggest? We are now pretty sure that those members of the committee are not here, and so when you're calling the vote, call the people that are present, and then if someone does arrive, then obviously we can add them, but we know now who belongs to the committee and who's not here.
Good. We're now on T. 383. Councilwoman Clark?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, this is simply another deletion, a companion deletion, ta-da, a companion deletion of inclusionary housing overlay. I'd like to move its adoption. It's consistent with what we've already done.
So, do we have a motion? You moved Councilwoman Clark?
I did.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. Councilwoman Rysinger votes yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Henry is here. Councilwoman Henry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have five yes. And affirmative, the motion passes.
So, housing overlays are gone as a category. I'm sorry, inclusive housing. They should, it should be everywhere.
Okay, so now, we move on. We're now on T. 756. This is planning.
Mr. Chairman, we can withdraw this amendment. It was a clarification that appears to be redundant.
Okay, do I have a motion to withdraw?
Move to withdraw.
Second. By Councilwoman Clark? Second by Councilwoman Henry.
Yeah, we're here.
All those in favor of the withdrawal say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. 756 is withdrawn. We are now on, Councilwoman Henry, out of Coach, do you have everything in front of you? You got it?
I have. I am at 756. I am going to be withdrawing Councilwoman Clark's withdrawals as we go, and we will, and I'll be listening to the new ones.
We already did, we already did have withdrawals. So, do you want us on T. 753?
Yep, I am.
Okay. We are on T. 753. This is planning.
Yes, this amendment is to add the sentence at the end in the description of the adult entertainment, that this applies to new adult entertainment, not currently on the map.
Forty-seven, one one one, at the time. Wow, read out.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed what...
And that the last sentence of the description should be deleted.
I'm sorry, I missed this. I was talking. What are we doing?
On page 177, this is the description of adult use overlay district, and the last sentence of that description should be deleted for clarity, because as we know, there are existing legally established adult uses that are outside of the overlay zone.
That's line 15 and 16.
So, yeah, delete the sentence on line 16. It starts on line 15.
Ah.
And to add that the, this is for new adult entertainment, the requirement for the city council ordinance.
Move the, move the amendment.
Moved by Clark. Second, second by Councilwoman Henry. Councilwoman Rysinger votes yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Henry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have five yes. Motion passes. Now, we are on T. 7, we are now on T. 772, planning.
Yes, this is to add the line, this is in the description of office residential districts, and that they are subject to the provisions of Title 97 governing conversions, that is, if they are to convert to multiple units, that they're subject to the lot, the building area requirements of 97.
Move approval.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark. Second by Councilwoman Henry. I'm just going to say, all those in favor say aye, unless someone wants to vote no, then they can, okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed? The ayes have it.
Can we get the, excuse me, Mr. Chairman and, and planning reps? If we don't, can we get these in writing, what we've just, I mean, I see what you're doing, but can we make sure that we have these in written form?
We can add them to the agency report for the specific language by T. number. It is pretty much what is here on the schedule.
I understand. It's just that, it's going to be a monumental task to interlineate this for legislative reference.
Guys will work that out.
Yeah.
We're now on T. 760, planning.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, this may be redundant, but is, we would like to insert here that historic buildings are exempt from the design standards for transit-oriented development. The reason being, you know, the, the design standards for new TOD development speak to things like the door of the new building must be oriented towards the transit station and that sort of thing. And oftentimes, historic buildings could not meet those standards and still maintain their character, so we wanted to do that. There is language earlier that was inserted in more broadly that the historic buildings or local historic districts are not subject to, or that they would govern in design standards if there's a conflict.
They want to exempt from...
But I think here, we want it to be very specific. It may be redundant, but I think it's worth putting in.
Where's, where is that previous language?
Believe it, I'd have to go back, Title IV, I believe. It was an amendment that we added in Title, it wasn't, it's not in the text, it's an amendment there, and this is an amendment, and that would be...
Yeah, I mean, I'm...
Question?
Yeah, Councilwoman Clark?
We're referring to locally designated landmarks, CHAP landmarks.
Right, or district buildings in local districts. It could be an individual landmark building, or it could be a building in a district.
Or it could be, it is a locally...
We suggested here using the term historic a little bit more broadly...
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
For this particular case, and it would go on, probably on page 179, right up there under scope.
Under what?
The scope of design standards on 179, 12-404, and just right up front, say, exempting historic buildings.
Move approval.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Clark. Second by Councilwoman Henry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 76, 760 passes. We are now on 759, which is planning. This design standard, same?
Yes, this is again a clarification in the design standards section, and I, remind me, did the committee vote to move design standard?
Yes, yes.
So, maybe we should hold on this?
Yeah, I think we should defer and do all these things at the same time. I'm just thinking the same way you are, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so, so I guess the note here would be move to design standards, and then when we...
Defer to, yes.
Prepare that as one document and vote it.
At the same time. But not to take back anything we've already done.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Move to defer to design standards.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second.
And Henry?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to move 759 to design standards, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. It's moved. T. 763?
This is your, these are both...
This is not design standards, this is parking, and this is to, in 12-405 D. 1, which would be line 20, parking lots and garages are not subject to the maximum parking limitations, and that is to add the phrase for, if they're for transit riders. Yeah, did I say that correctly?
Probably, but...
The exemption from...
What does it mean?
Is, is only if it's for transit riders. So, they're not subject to the maximum parking limitations if the garage is for transit riders.
Oh.
In other words, in, in developing, transit-oriented development can have multiple components, and the concept is sort of a live-work mixed-use development, so you want to set a maximum of the amount of parking, so you encourage people to not use so much cars and both live and work there and use the transit. But in working this through, and this was, this amendment was put in when we still had a red line, but that there may be situations where you have a mixed-use development that has a significant garage component that's specifically for commuters, like a park-and-ride kind of component, that isn't related to necessarily the development there. In other words, it may be a joint use, sort of a, and so to make that clear, that yes, you have a maximum amount of parking for the uses, but that the park-and-ride is exempt from that.
Oh.
So, that they can build a larger garage, if that makes sense, within that zone.
So, the amendment says that in a TOD, the garages aren't subject to maximum requirements of the development?
Only if they're being used for commuter. They're not subject to a maximum.
I didn't even know that there was a maximum amount of parking you were allowed to provide.
Or you have to.
Only in TOD.
Oh, no, that's a minimum that you have to.
No, no, there's a maximum as well.
There's a maximum that you're allowed to provide?
Yes.
In TOD?
In TOD only. I mean, just, I mean, we could...
But you're, ah, you're lifting the maximum.
Lifting the maximum if it's for a park-and-ride function.
Yeah, okay. Councilwoman Clark?
I moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, but I'm still a little curious as to why there was a maximum.
If you look at the, the thinking and the concepts on transit-oriented development, that is typical to have a maximum, because you want to design the uses to share and to reduce the number, the whole concept is based on that.
It's a millennial thing.
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay.
Just for the record, many cities, and Melissa can assist here, are going to maximums in their downtown areas as well.
I hope they have soft roofs.
In, in, in theory, I'm supposed to be relying on Ali from the 7th District as our millennial whisper. So, okay, but, yeah, so we seconded, it's moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded.
Councilwoman Clark moves. Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 763 is moved. We're now on...
I hope the millennials are streaming this.
T. 764, T. 764, planning.
And I guess this is a, a companion amendment, in that is that the Planning Commission voted that, given the challenge of some of these developments, there should be the ability for the planning director to reduce the required parking in TOD.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark. Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion moves. T. 764. Now, we are on T. 818. This is again planning, TOD.
Again, this is language to give a little bit more flexibility in the, in the parking, and it is on page...
180.
I think it's 180. It says here 80. To 12-405 D. in the section on lots and garages. I'm not going to read through that, but that is the language to insert there.
But basically, what's the bottom line of this amendment? What does it do in terms?
It again allows for some variability in the maximum amount of parking in the TOD garages.
Is it redundant?
We can work through with the staff to see if they end up being a redundancy in this, but there may be a little bit of redundancy with the previous amendment.
Well, this one says, number two, parking lots must be located, so it's given where they need to be located.
Right.
Where are the buildings? And also...
And then this is the, that they must provide at least 50%, but not more than 100%. It, it basically gives a framework for a variance on the parking, that you can't go below a certain amount, but you can't go above.
Okay. Councilman Henry, go ahead.
So, is the, is this asking for the... He's got to use the mic, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, take it.
Is this asking for the director to be able to reduce the maximum, the minimum, or both? Or either?
The director could reduce the maximum.
Reduce the maximum. Okay, that really...
I'm sorry, reduce the minimum. I said that backwards.
Reduce the minimum.
Reduce the minimum.
Okay, if it was, if it was the maximum, that would be, that would be redundant to the one we just did. And if it's the minimum, then why are we giving the planning director the ability to grant a parking variance?
Really?
This was suggested, again, that was, I guess that was the one you actually just voted, which was 764, and this was suggested because of the unique nature of the TOD development, that you really need to be able to look... that you really need to be able to look at these on a case-by-case basis. They're sort of unique.
So he needs wiggle room?
Unique situations, yes. It's only for the TOD developments.
Let's, until we figure out what's going on.
Yeah, it's only for TODs. Are you guys okay with this?
We don't even have a red line anymore.
Yeah, the TOD developments would likely be in the, probably in Councilwoman Middleton and Clark's district along, like the Reisterstown, the Wabash stations, the metros. We still have a number of sites along those metro stations.
Okay, move approval.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, 818 moves. Okay, we are now on T 770, planning, page 181.
I'm sorry, were we on 18 or 818?
We were on 818. We just approved it.
Yes, 770 is a clarification. The hospital and campus zones cover often very large swaths of land. And there was questions, if it's, you know, rolling hills of land, how do you measure the height limit? And the Planning Commission suggested that the, it should be clarified that specifically to the campuses, the height measurement for buildings is relative to the closest perimeter street. So that if the ground slopes one way to one perimeter street, but another way to the other perimeter street, you still measure to the closest perimeter for where the building is going.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we have not really had a chance to vet this. And we would like, I'd like to defer if we could, and could we see some actual language?
Yes.
Yes.
So you move to defer?
I move to defer for language.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, move to defer by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And this 770 is moved for language. We are on T.
Or walks.
If the crow is flying from the ground up to the top of the building, then I think she's absolutely right.
Let's move on to, we are now on T 396. This is Councilwoman Clark.
Okay. Let me get to my page here. Page 183. Mr. Chairman, could you oblige me? Basically, if I went 394 before that, then we'd be in sequence, and then 396. In other words, can I start with 394 and then go to 396? They're right beside each other.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
394.
Okay, so this is now educational campus amendments. 394 is.
Page 183, line 5 to 8.
Page 183, line, between line 5 and 8. Oh, I got to get my sheets. Excuse me. Here's the amendments on your sheets. I'll tell, here's what it says, and I'll tell you what the changes are as I go through. These are ECs, they apply to primary, middle, and high schools and colleges. So EC1 is the first, and colleges/university are EC2. All right. An educational facility within the EC1 and EC district may, but that changes to must, apply to the city council for approval of a campus master plan, newer language for any new construction, which may deviate from the bulk and yard regulations of Table 12-502, period. And then I did take out that last phrase. I'd like to move that.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of 394, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, so Councilman Henry votes no. And we have 1, 2, 3, 4, yes. 394, the motion passes. Now we will go to your, what's it next, 390?
396.
There's 396 out here. Okay, I see, I got it, okay.
396, page 183.
Line 10.
Says.
Line 10.
Line 10.
396.
Says it's line 10.
Yes.
It's a whole new, it's a whole new amendment. It's all new. Until, and here's what it says. Until a campus master plan is approved by city council ordinance, Table 12-502 use, bulk, and yard regulations apply in their entirety in the EC zoning districts. In other words, EC districts, which are on a map, have underlying use, bulk, and other requirements, which are fine. And they're in effect until and unless the university, the prep school comes in and wants to do a master plan, which is like a PUD, which, which. Which goes beyond the requirements of the underlying district. So that's what it's saying. It's saying that until you, until you do a master plan, which you don't have to do, then underlying zoning is what counts. I'd like to move it.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Let it be noted that Councilman Henry voted no. The motion passes, 396. So 396 and 394 is complete.
Okay. Top of the next page, voting page. Yeah, take your time.
We are now on 395. Councilwoman Clark.
395, still EC, page 183, lines 9 and 10. Going with current language, once a campus master plan is submitted and approved, the development proceeds in accordance with the plan. I take out, we amend out the words rather than, with a plan rather than, and add instead, with a plan including only, including with only specifically approved sites which deviate from the base district regulations. In other words, you come in, you get your master plan, then you have, that master plan includes exemptions to, increases over the underlying zoning. And that's approved by city council, and off you go to build your tall building.
So you move?
Move it.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilwoman Middleton, correct? All those in favor of, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Let it be noted that Councilman Henry voted no. The motion, 395, passed. We are now. Okay, we have here from, anyone here wants to move 390?
I do. Would you like to move that one? Sharon, 391, Roland Park Civic League? It's on, it's on our sheet. Councilwoman Middleton and I prepared this sheet together. With the, with the community. So you're on, if you look at my sheet.
You have it?
Yes, page, this is an EC amendment four. Page 183. Lines.
12 and 13.
12 and 13.
Amen.
For B, applicability and effect. Line 1, a campus master plan may be applied only to those properties owned by the educational facility at the time of the approval of the campus master plan.
Second.
Move, did you move that?
I move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Middleton, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You say nay? Let it be noted that Councilman Henry voted no on 391. Motion passes, 391 passes. Now we are on 3.
99. 98, yeah, 97 and 98.
We were too fast. We are now on T 399.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I need a sheet.
Yes, correct.
399 is Councilwoman Clark.
399, page 183, lines 18 to 20. I will emphasize the words that are being added to the text. A campus master plan and any subsequent major added amendment to it requires, it should be requires, approval by, by city council ordinance as a zoning text amendment in accordance with the procedures as applicable of Title V, Subtitle V zoning amendments of this code. Move to approve.
Question by Councilwoman.
Yeah, I can't vote, but I can ask a question.
Question on a motion. Councilwoman Specter?
Yes, I just am concerned about, what does major mean?
Well, it's like, it's, it is, there is later on, you will see an amendment that talks about what a major change is.
Well, you're voting on it now, so could you explain it now?
I will.
You're voting on this now, so could you please explain what major means?
Go down my sheets, our sheets, to T 403.
You're right.
Take these sheets, go to 403. Number T 403. And there you have what a major amendment would be. It would be increase the boundaries, add additional uses, or add additional property to the EC district. That's what it is. Yeah, it would have to be approved by city council, otherwise minor changes can be approved, you know, by, without an ordinance.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Henry.
Just out of curiosity, what's the difference between increase the boundaries of and add additional property to?
Well, I could.
Let's just discuss it, so.
That's a very good question, but there are properties that don't have buildings on them. Oh, you mean?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, like.
Well, additional property, if, so if you're adding a new lot, aren't you also effectively changing the boundaries?
That's what I, that was.
I mean, it's, it's pure wordsmithing.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not initial to the concept.
Basically, increasing boundaries is just a trigger always for city council. And so we added it, and the community people added it. It may be somewhat redundant, but it does not do any harm.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Let it be noted that Councilman Henry voted no. Motion passes on 399. We are now on.
393?
We got T 393, which is.
Oh.
Councilwoman, is that your district, Councilwoman Middleton?
Yep.
Middleton, you want to go on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all.
Where are we at?
U.P. 393.
I'm fine, yeah. That's okay, I'm sitting here looking at it. It's, it's minor. It's, but it's an amendment that, a move, an amendment that would delete the word general to make this statement more specific on 183, 31, and 32.
All right, do we have a motion?
I just made one.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. 393 moves. We are now on.
92. We haven't missed anything?
No, they were withdrawals. They were withdrawals. They were good, yeah, we're good, it's just a misunderstanding.
Okay, no wonder it's confusing.
Okay, what about, just for the, for the community associations, I see 392, Roland Park Civic League. Does anyone want to touch that?
392 is on page 29 of my, of what I've got here.
So it's Mary Pat, you're going to.
Yeah, it's Sharon, and it's Councilwoman Middleton and myself. Yeah, I got to type it.
Okay, go ahead.
That was my job.
Go ahead, move on.
Campus master plan must include three. And we take out the words, a general range of, sort of like vague, and it just says now, relocation, approximate square footage, and approximate building heights within a reasonable range of all proposed structures and uses. Move approval.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second, and just to add.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Just the added statement that, you know, these properties border residential areas that, you know, have, they're historic, they're properties that are historic. They're, they're properties that have significant value investment. And, you know, sometimes it comes to a point where institutions have to sit down and realize that you've, you've really grown to be part of a community. And you, you need to participate and work with the community. And these are things, you know, remember, we're correcting and working and updating things that have not been looked at in over 40 years. And there's been lots of changes to communities all over this city, particularly around educational campuses, so.
All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, 392, motion passes. We are now on T 774, Planning Department.
Yes, the Planning Commission voted to recommend that the campus master plans, both educational and hospital, in regards to signage, be limited to the extern, the signage around the perimeter, and that we not attempt to manage or master plan or control internal signage that would not be visible from the perimeter streets.
Yeah, she's.
402?
No, 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 we're on 774.
T 774.
I was following your sheet for.
So it goes in.
I missed that one in between, sorry.
Councilman, there's other people that have amendments besides 402. Okay, so we're on what, T 77?
So the insert, it's in two places, both page 186 and 183, to say that the signage at the primary ingress egress points need to be shown, rather than internal campus signage.
So do we have a motion?
Move approval.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor of 774, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion passes.
Okay, what's this?
We are now on, uh, four, T four oh two, which is Councilwoman Clark. We're on page one eighty-four, Councilwoman Clark, you have the ball?
Um, yes. Page one eighty-four, lines nine to eleven. Um, educational campus zoning district amendments. Basically, this is about city council approval. Uh, I will emphasize the added language to the text. An addition, an educational facility may choose to submit a campus master plan for approval simultaneously with a zoning map amendment, so that the land would be controlled by the campus master plan, rather than the base district standards. And we add both subject to approval by city council ordinance. In other words, the master plan as enacted, and the zoning map amendment, which is another piece of legislation, I'd like to move approval.
So, you move T four oh two?
Yep.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Let it be noted that Councilman Henry voted no. Text T four oh two passes.
Oh, I, I, four oh, yeah, four oh one. For Windhurst.
Is this, is this on your?
Oops, no, that's, that's, no, that's a withdrawal.
Okay, so, so was that?
We're finished with that page.
Four oh one.
Which thing?
Okay.
Four, no, 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 four oh, no, it's a dupe. So the next page has the amendment.
Four oh three?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we are now on T four, okay, I see, I got it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilwoman. T four oh three, Councilwoman Clark, page one eighty-four, lines fifteen through seventeen.
Um, basically, we're adding to the text, I will, um, on behalf, in this case, of the Windhurst Improvement Association Amendment. And here is what it will say, with your help. Map amendments to increase the boundaries of, add additional uses, or, back to text, add additional property to the EC district require approval by city council ordinance. I'd like to move that amendment.
Okay, T oh, T four oh three, moved, moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Let it be noted that Councilman Henry voted no. T four oh three, the motion's passed. Yes, Council.
I'm sorry, I should have made this statement at the beginning of the string of EC amendments. Um, forgive me. Um, I wanted to say that I appreciate my colleagues' efforts to address problems in other parts of the city with these EC amendments. Um, in my district, I have an institution that has a thirty-plus year history of working collaboratively with the community to address all of these issues without having to go through city council and city government. And there were concerns that, um, us, a, an ordinance process might actually be less productive than the process that they're used to using now. And so, I have been, um, voting against these, um, in deference to, um, my communities. Um, however, I will point out that, uh, there may be an issue with, um, trying to revisit these on the floor for just EC one, instead of EC two. And I was just going to take this opportunity to call the committee's attention to that possibility. Thank you.
Let it be noted, Councilwoman.
I, I just want to keep in mind, remember, this is, these, the language has been in, the old language has been in place for forty years, and, um, you know, I feel part of the responsibility of a city council member is to, you know, we need to have some kind of leeway in working with our constituency, which includes the campus. And again, this all helps to build those partnerships. And, uh, things have changed tremendously, and partnership building is extremely important. Whether it's a educational campus, whether it's a faith-based institution, we all need to have that line of communication, especially when you're close to a, to a neighborhood, um, or, you know, especially when you're lined against, um, residents that pay high taxes in communities that, um, you know, are historical communities.
Well, I, I would like to just say, I want to thank my colleague, Councilwoman Middleton, because thanks to her, I got to go to a whole lot of meetings with, um, with a lot of, uh, people who run these institutions and operate them. And I found them to be very helpful, very useful, to see the community working with the institutions. Um, and I think this is a good outcome, and I hope we can hold on to it and move forward. Thank you.
Well, that's, that, now we are on.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may say so, um, the handout that I, I handed out this morning has, um, our proposed bulk regulations, um, yard regulations, FAR, et cetera, for the EC one and the EC two. Obviously, I'm moving to defer these two tables when we take our tables.
Okay.
Uh, do I need a second for that? Oh, we're not there, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh.
We're on T four oh five.
I'm sorry.
And that's, uh, Councilwoman Clark.
Oops.
Four oh four, I'm sorry, we're on, we're on T four oh four. Let me say it again, we are now on T four oh four, which is Councilwoman Clark. That is page one eighty-five, line ten.
Just give me a second to go backwards. Uh, somehow I got way ahead of myself. Okay, hospital. Four oh five.
Four oh four.
Four oh four.
Page ten. No, page one eighty-five, line ten.
Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, um, we are now on hospital campuses. And, um, I would like to make a motion to, um, delete as permitted uses in that district, hotels, motels, and rooming houses. You'll see that in the next amendment, I'm going to put them back in as conditional with zoning board approval. But I would like to take them out as a matter of right, um, in, in a hospital campus.
Okay, did you go, use BMCA?
Yeah, it's BMCA.
Okay. As long as, because, okay, I, I, just for a question on, have you, you made a motion on that?
I did.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Clark. I just want to, um, say I, I can support that now, because there are some hospitals, campuses that need these for like, the House of McDonald and all that, so I just want to make sure.
I second if she made a motion.
Okay, so you second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So on four oh four, second by Councilwoman Middleton, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, four oh four, motion passed. Now we are on T four oh five, Councilwoman Clark.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, just, here I am. Four oh five, one eighty-five, lines twenty-four to twenty-seven. Now, I'm putting this back in as a conditional use, uh, God bless you, of the zoning, through the zoning board process. Um, returning, um, hotels, motels, and rooming houses.
Okay.
Um, as a conditional use zoning board, uh, I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Henry.
Yeah.
Councilman Henry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T four oh five passes. We're now on T, uh, we are on T seven-six-one, which is planning. Laurie?
Uh, yes, the Planning Commission voted to add indoor and outdoor recreation to the permitted uses in hospital, again, in recognition that our hospitals are major institutions and, um, with many employees, and that this is really a part of their overall, um, mission and wellness, and, um, that should be a permitted use.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Seven sixty-one.
Seven sixty-one.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry.
It's adding to the list, um, recreation indoor and outdoor, adding to the list of permitted uses on hospital campuses.
Moved by Councilwoman Middleton, who's second?
Roseby.
Uh, Council Roseby, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, the ayes have it, seven sixty-one moves. Uh, okay, uh, Councilwoman Clark, T four oh eight, page one eighty-six, line sixteen through eighteen. Councilwoman Clark?
Yep, I'm with you, um, I'm trying to, okay. Now, what we're, what, what we're doing here, what I'm doing here, is trying to match up, um, to some extent, what we have done with the educational campuses. And so, in four oh eight, a hospital facility within the H district may apply to the city council for approval of a general development plan. And added in is for any new construction, which may deviate from the bulk and yard regulations of table twelve dash five oh two, period. I'd like to make that motion.
Councilwoman Clark, moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay, the ayes have it, four oh eight moves.
Wherever it is.
Okay.
Oh, there it is. Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have two amendments that I did submit to the committee originally in writing, and did not pop back out, um, on the voting list. May I, may I have the, um, privilege of putting them before this committee for a vote, please?
Do you have, is there anything?
Oh, yeah, it's right there. I'm calling them T BBB and T CCC. I, I, I have the old records that show.
So this had nothing to do with four twelve, right? This is new? These are two new amendments?
Well, they're not new amendments, they were in my original amendments years ago, but they didn't show up with a number.
Okay, all right.
So I have to, I had to create a number for them.
So you say?
Yeah, I am.
Does all, does all the members have this in front of them?
Yes.
Same page?
Again, this is like, um, uh, he, the text for hospitals, a general development plan for hospitals may be applied only to those properties owned by, and we take out the words, or under the control of, the hospital facility at the time of the approval of the general development plan. I'd like to move that, it's similar to what we've done with college, with, um, educational campuses.
Second.
Okay, so the number is nine forty-two, moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of nine forty-two say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Council, let it be noted, the Council Roseby, uh, votes no. Um, text nine forty-two passes. That one, uh, next one is.
I have T CCC. Again, it, it's in your rec, it's in the committee's records as having been submitted. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, TCC would be nine forty-three.
Oh, it's nine, oh, it got way in the back. Oh, that's fine. Not, all right, T dash nine forty-three. Um, an approved general development plan is a permitted exception to all base district regulations of the H district, which are expressly subject to the plan, including plan-approved use sign parking and maximum height regulations. In other words, you got this plan approved, and it serves as a exception to the base zoning for an H campus district. And it's, and, and that includes exceptions to, um, use sign parking and maximum height regulations that otherwise would apply. Move the amendment.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, nine forty-three passes. Um, we are now on T four twelve. Laurie? Yes, T four twelve. T four twelve, Councilwoman Clark, page one eighty-seven, line fourteen.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you would oblige, and the committee would oblige, um, I, I would like to go four-ten, four-eleven, four-twelve, four-thirteen, four-fourteen. They're all on the list, because that goes in the sequence of how they appear in the text. Yeah, I mean, that way it'll make more sense.
Okay. Four-ten, will you repeat that?
Yeah, so I'd like to start with four-ten.
And what's the other ones?
Eleven, four-eleven, four-twelve, four-thirteen, four-fourteen, and that way, they're moving right down the page. The numbers are scrambled on the list, okay? Yeah, let me do that. Mm-hmm. If I could. Um, four-ten, uh, this is hospitals. Um.
Page one eighty-seven, lines five and six.
Uh, under the, this is like we did in the campus. We taking out the words, a general range of, and tightening up that submittal requirements include a list of the location, approximate square footage, and approximate building heights within a reasonable range of all proposed structures and uses. I'd like to move that amendment.
Others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Uh, let it be noted, the Councilman, Councilman Roseby voted no. Uh, text four-ten moves.
Okay, four-eleven, may I?
Page one eighty-seven, that's line seven, uh, through nine.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, it's the word, it's what we did with ECs, it's, um, get, yeah, deleting the word general, so it gets more specific about location. I'd like to move the amendment.
Okay, four-eleven, moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Ayes have it, uh, four-eleven passes.
Okay. Four twelve. Page one eighty-seven, line fourteen, another submittal requirement for H campus plan, add, as indicated, the location and capacity of all existing and proposed off-street parking and loading spaces, so, existing and proposed. So, when you go to do your plan, it's not just what you got, it's what you want to get, and, and that goes into the plan. So, move it, thank you, sir.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, four twelve moves, now we are on four thirteen.
Okay, can I just write that word? Okay, four thirteen, map, under map amendments. This is like what we did with, uh, campuses, uh, educational. A hospital may choose to submit a general development plan, and, at the same time, oh, uh, um, a zoning map amendment. And you can do that, and they are both subject to approval by city council ordinance.
You move it?
Move it.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of four thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, four thirteen passes.
And this is my last one for hospitals.
Four fourteen.
Four fourteen, page one eighty-seven, line twenty-three and twenty-four. It's li, just like educational campuses, map amendments to increase boundaries, add permitted uses, or add additional property to the H district require, um, hospital campus amendment approval by the, by city council ordinance. Uh, move it.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, four fourteen passes. Uh, which the, which, um, okay.
I'm, I've got four seventeen coming up.
Okay, let me, okay, four seventeen.
That's, that's next.
Page one eighty-eight. This is inclusionary housing overlay district.
Delivering the final blow, if you will let me.
What's that line, twenty through thirty-two?
Final blow, huh?
Uh, twenty to thirty-two, I'm, I'm moving to delete the entire section. In effect, the idea of a, of a inclusionary housing overlay district has not met with approval in general, around, all the way around, so I'm moving, just get rid of it.
Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilwoman Moesby. Is that right? Second by Councilwoman Moesby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Four seventeen passes. Um, next one is T seven seven three. This is planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is in the subtitle nine, waterfront overlay zones, and it really is a, a clarification, um, in the, um, that the building heights, this is line twenty-four, maximum building heights, as indicated in the overlay zones, and these are from existing urban renewal plans. And, uh, to make it, uh, quite clear that the height in the overlay zone, uh, governs not the underlying zoning. And that would be on line twenty-six.
What page are we on? Sorry.
One eighty-nine.
Hey, the, the, you know, T, one eighty-nine, line twenty-six, maximum building heights in the waterfront overlay zone are as indicated in the following tables, not the underlying zoning. It may be redundant, but, um-
Where we love, this is a day for redundancy.
Okay.
I'll move approval.
Okay, so seven seventy-three is moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman, second, Henry?
I'm wondering whether we should wait, well, if we wait.
Can we defer?
Should we defer?
I, I would request, Chair, um, I know that Councilman Craft is out sick. I would, I would defer to defer this until Councilman Craft.
And can we get, all right, so, yeah, my apologies.
Then we would probably recommend the same deferral for seven six six and seven five eight, seven six seven. They are all in the waterfront zone.
So we're going to defer seven six six, seven five eight, seven six seven, and seven seven three. Do I have a motion to defer?
Wait, seven, yeah, seven seven three, seven, okay.
Second by Councilwoman Henry. All those in favor, deferral, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Uh, so, uh, they get deferred. Um, we're now on, very, Councilwoman Clark.
Oh, yeah, really.
T, T six, T six seventeen.
Yes, miss-
T six seventeen, Councilwoman Clark, that's page, what, one ninety-three?
Okay, so, if, if, Mr. Chair, may I just have a moment?
Go ahead.
Okay. What? It's a long story, and, uh, it's not done. And actually, um, I would like to go through this and have a vote on it today, but I, the Remington Neighborhood Alliance ha, has requested I defer it. I would rather see, because these are Hamden-approved amendments, and they have blocks and blocks of RMU. Yes, it's my district, but they're, but these places are in other districts as well. RMU is an overlay district, therefore, to have an RMU, you need a city council ordinance or approval of the transform ordinance, which basically includes several locations with that overlay. One of the locations with many, many, many properties, um, is in Hamden for, for numerous properties. So, I'm out there trying to eliminate the RMU, and the people who own those properties and are around in that area are opposed. So, then I look at what they're really saying, and what they're saying in that case is that most of them are Zone B1, and by having the RMU overlay, they're actually limiting their commercial options because their being, underlying zoning is in the Rs, residential, and the overlay gives them some choices of, um, uh, uh, commercial u, or non-residential uses, but not many. So, I have gone full circle. No, I'm not. I can't withdraw it because, but I will, I, I, let me just go forward with it. So what I've done is, at the very end of this packet, I wrote up the interlineated version of what my amendments look like. The single most important amendment is-
Where, where? Educate, inform us where this is at, Councilwoman.
Oh, it's at, it's at the last three pages of the amendment sheets you've been reading. It's called at the top, Title XII, Special Purpose District, Zoning RMU, okay? It's the last three pages.
Let us see, where's it at?
It's the last three pages of your sheet.
Okay, this, okay, Title XII.
So what I've done is, I rewrote most of the section with my amendments in there. First of all, they want this, and now I want it because it limits their commercial reach. These are houses. So, basically, the first amendment is the one that was the hardest because some of these, these properties that are being subjected to RMU are residential, not only in their zoning, but in their use. So what some neighbors said at the meetings, and there were meetings, was, "Look, we don't care if, we don't mind if people on our block start yet, start having a commercial use, but we would like notice about it. We would like to know about it." So, the amendment that I, uh, worked out with the Hamden Community Council Zoning Committee was this one. Upon establishment of the RMU district by city council ordinance, included properties require conditional use approval by the zoning board when applying for the property's initial conversion from a residential use to one of the non-residential uses listed in twelve dash ten oh three of this title. In other words, you've got a pile of houses on several blocks. One block, for example, is almost all residential, zoned residential, but would come under this overlay, which means they could have certain non-residential uses in the buildings. What they're saying is, if a building is residentially used and it's about to convert under RMU, it has to go to the zoning board for approval the first time, so that the moment a building which is not being commercially used becomes commercially used, the first time that happens, it needs zoning board approval. That way, that serves as notice, and that's what the big change is. After that, they can change, or continue, or whatever, and there's a number of uses they can have. So that's one thing.
Six nineteen, right?
That's six nineteen, or whatever it is, women. All right, so the first thing, excuse me while I, I just got to find. So the first amendment that I have offered is, wait a minute, six seventeen, and that is what I just read to you about the first, all right, so these, this thing goes over as an overlay, and you have a right to take your residentially zoned house now, right, night, remember, most of these houses in my district are B1 right now, and they're going to a lesser impact. But you have the right under RMU to have, to just go pull a permit and have a commercial use on the first floor, um, by reason of RMU. And this limits that and says, the first time that property becomes commercial, you got to go to the zoning board because it's changed, it's, it's a big change. If you already got a commercial use and you're going to change it, well, that's different. But for the first time a house becomes a shop, all right, so I'd like to move that.
By Councilwoman Clark, do I have a second?
No, please.
Do I have a second?
I got a que, just a question. What, what's the purpose of a master plan, then? If you're, I mean, these things that I see listed are incorporated in a community master plan, so why?
Which thing?
That, when I go down to, um, I guess I'm doing, yeah, the uses.
Oh, the different uses they can have?
Yeah, it's like, uh, those are things that you develop in a community master plan that you take away or add and try to enforce it through a master plan.
They've, I mean, Hamden went through a huge master plan a few years ago, huge, but I can't say that they took this up because this is a new concept, this RMU, and I, I have a lot of, so, I mean, they've approved the Hamden Community Council Zoning Committee, which was very involved. There was quite an uproar when I wanted to get rid of this RMU entirely, okay? Big meetings. And, and basically, then there were like, then I said, "Okay, I surrender", especially because I realized, Jew is, most of the houses affected are Zone B1. This limits them in their commercial uses. But the community reviewed it. Stephanie Murdoch made thousands of copies of the, of all these uses, of all these provisions. She had a copy of, we handed out copies of every single property that was in that community that was RMU. I mean, we, we've been through it. And then finally, this, these amendments were, Stephanie, I'm-
I'm just trying to figure out how it's going, how it affects the entire city and the other-
Well, I don't know, see, I don't know where all the RMU overlays are.
Do you have an example of, maybe, the, most of them, where they, what areas they'd be in?
The RMU is, um, is shown on your maps, um, and they tend to be on the edges of existing commercial districts. So, in the Hamden area, it is some of the side streets where you have a smattering of commercial, but not a full-fledged main street. Um, a very good example where we use RMU that most of the committee members are likely familiar with is the Twenty-Fifth Street in, in Charles Village, where there are row buildings, there are offices, but there's some ground floor commercial. Um, the purpose of the RMU is to really maintain the character of those buildings, to remove the commercial zoning, which would likely incentivize demolition, but to still allow the flexibility of some commercial uses, which typically are there, they're just not a, really a full-fledged commercial district. It's kind of a transition district between a main street and the residential, and they are shown on the map.
There's, there's, there's a lot of questions you could surge about this.
That's fine.
Councilwoman Clark, are you, are you talking?
I want to, I'd like to defer it anyway. I just don't want it to get lost in the shuffle.
Understood. I was just trying to think of my district, and I just mentioned, like, Garrison Boulevard, kind of.
You know, I think if planning would please do us the favor of letting each council person know where they are proposed on their maps to have these things. Can you do that?
I mean, they're shown on the maps. I can try to make a list.
Can you bring a big map that, the next time you come?
They're on your, the boards, the, um-
I, I know they are.
The, the maps that the, the council, the fourteen maps that are being taken to each of the meetings, we can bring them in here for the next session.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, so basically, wait a minute, let me, just hear me out. So, I'm going to move to defer this so everybody can take a look and see if you've got these things.
Just to get a better understanding.
Yeah, I mean, I, like, I didn't know from Adam, and, and Remington anyway wants me to defer, and I just got to hold this part about the first time conversions in my hand. Okay, so move to defer, um, for language and review and maps.
So, do we have a second? Second by Councilwoman Henry. All those in favor, defer six seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Six seventeen is deferred.
Yeah, that's a lot to digest.
For, and we'll get maps and-
Digest.
Right.
And stuff, and-
So where we, there's, this is, this is-
That's a lot to digest.
Okay, and so, basically, Mr. Chairman, therefore, I'd like to move to defer the other amendments that I have remaining in this chapter because they're all about RMU and DMU, which is detached dwelling, mixed-use districts.
Give us the numbers.
Well, okay, um-
Four nineteen?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, just, let me just make sure I'm giving you the right ones. Um, where are we? Okay, six nineteen, six eighteen, four twenty-five, four twenty-four, four twenty-six, and four twenty-seven. Now, I can't send these to Limbo forever, but I, I would like the chance for us all to-
Televise.
Thanks, I know.
And I think, um-
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, where are they?
For the record, the DMU is only mapped, uh, in, I believe it's Councilwoman Middleton's district. It's the Liberty Heights corridor is the only place that we use the DMU. Is that, it's that little section of Liberty Heights where, um, you have sort of a marginal commercial area. Yeah. A little piece of Garrison, yes. Mm-hmm, but I think it's all in your district.
So what we'll do is, when we come back to this, we'll have the maps, and that way we have a better, okay, so let's, let's go over these numbers. We're looking at, what, uh, four nine, let's go with, uh, four nineteen as part of it?
Uh, it is, I'm sorry. All right, here's what I have to defer. Six seven, a T precedes each number.
Right, we got that.
Six seventeen, six sixteen, four nineteen, that's what you were, four twenty-one, four twenty-two. Wait a minute, what's this?
Four twenty-two's a twelve.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, four twenty-three. Four, uh, six nineteen, six eighteen, four twenty-four, four twenty-six. Four-- uh, six-nineteen, six-eighteen, four-twenty-four, four-twenty-six, four-twenty-five, and four-twenty-seven.
Okay, for Steph, can you go over that one more time, please?
Yeah. T's, six-seventeen, six-sixteen, four-nineteen, four-twenty-one, four-twenty-two, four-twenty-three. T-six-nineteen, this is now detached, mixed-use. T-- all right, you with me? T-six-nineteen, six-eighteen, four-twenty-four, four-twenty-six, four-twenty-five, and four-twenty-seven. All deferred. That's DMUs and RMUs. That's all it is, and that's the end of this chapter.
Okay, so...
Title.
And we will come back, Councilwoman Clark, and for the members, we will come back. We will have the maps. That way, we can really specifically look at that. Okay, so...
You have to remember, this is citywide. It's not...
Yeah, I know.
I-- I know, I just, um, I can only...
That is why we're requesting for it to be deferred.
That's why I think it's a good idea. I just don't want to lose-- I got to do-- I got to get this one amendment in here.
So, do I have... I need a motion. Do I have a motion?
Move to defer all those.
Second.
Moved by-- seconded by Councilman Henry. All those in favor, defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and all the numbers above will be deferred. Now, this-- this completes Title Twelve. We are now going on recess and coming back, right? Was it T-fifty? Wait a minute, hold on for one second. Wait a minute.
What? Wait a minute, what are we talking about here?
That's the agency.
Oh.
Okay, so, so we're ready, right?
Which one?
Okay, so, we'll be coming back. Huh? Okay, we are now-- we are now-- where's this?
What is it, two o'clock, Mr. Chair?
Hold on for one second. Just one second. Our next voting session on City Bill twelve-dash-zero-one-five-two Transform Baltimore will be, uh, begin at two P.M. today. Thank you.
Yep. Well, I'll be here. I have amendments, and I hope you'll consider them. I did great, and, um, I think we did good. I think we did well.